Mr. Paul Schmitz. And whoever may be helping you.
Joining me is our Cathy White, she is going to be. While she's getting set up, we do have a history of requests for clubs. We haven't yet, at least in my time here, approved those. We have figure skating, we have a bowling club in town. And so I'll have some opinions about that if it may become true with the proposals. But it definitely is a, you know, I foresee this, that particular program kind of being on par with Knowledge Bowl. What Knowledge Bowl does, and the Knowledge Bowl of shotguns.
Right, well, it's a virtual, it's a virtual competition.
Right.
So that makes it very different because our transportation costs are minimal. Our repere costs.
My granddaughter.
Well, you better take it.
She wants to FaceTime.
The phone I had interruptions are gonna have a fine here Charlie.
Maybe she wants to see the high school.
Maybe.
Maybe put her on that, she can watch that.
Alright.
So for those of you that don't know Cathy, Cathy is a math teacher at the high school. However, the role that she's playing, the role she plays on her leadership team is the role of our data person. So she's been working with Tom Byer, collecting the data and putting it together for me and making my 150 different thoughts look competent. Hopefully on this PowerPoint presentation, we have a couple of the members of our team here. I appreciate taking the time, we have a lot going on at the, you taking the time to hear about what we're doing. We have a lot going on at the high school. We have a little bit of an advantage over some of the other districts in that I don't need to give you a long history of the process in this plan because you've heard it probably at least three other times. As a matter of fact, last Wednesday, a teacher, Cassie Akerson, who's, I believe, a 4th grade teacher at Kennedy, came to our administrative meeting, this is off the script already, but important to me. She came to our, she came to our meeting and she demonstrated a fully implemented PLC. She, and it's interesting, you know, the way I learn if somebody's going to teach me how to bake a cake, it's nice to see the cake and then that's, that's what we're going to be baking. And so with the whole PLCs and school improvement plans, so far I've been, been, you know, kind of sorting it out as people have gone and trying to figure out how this is all going to work. And to see a fully realized implemented plan was really powerful to me. And it was, it was, in some ways, it seemed simple, the power was in its simplicity when she was able to, once everything's totally aligned and everybody's on the same page and all the pieces are brought together, it really was something that was powerful for me to see. Now, it also made me a little nervous in that, and I'll get into, the senior high school, school improvement plan is going to be necessarily more complicated than the elementary plans. And that, that will be obvious as we go through this. It will be necessarily more complicated for all sorts of, for several reasons, many of which I'll talk about today. But at the same time, the scaffolding and the steps that we will take to get to ours, our data based, our data driven school improvement plans and strategies will have, will have much in common with what all of the, with all of the schools do. Okay, so on to the, on to the high school. School improvement history, I do want to go back just a step. A lot of you weren't here back in the old NCA's, NCA days. Wilmer Senior High School used to be an NCA accredited high school. NCA is a nationally, a national organization that accredits high schools. And there is a review cycle, a six-year review cycle and process that every school that's accredited by NCA needs to go through. And it's very similar to a school, the school improvement plan and cycle that we are, that we are now getting into. We sunsetted NCA several years ago, I think it was maybe five years ago. And since that time, we still have a school improvement plan called something different, we have strategies for improvement. And those strategies were developed by administration. And I've been part of the implementation of, of these strategies. And I want to go through these just quickly. So when we talk about where we're going to go, this, some of these details will be part of it, some of these details will be moving on. The number one bullet that we've been focusing on the last three years at the high school through this improvement plan is curriculum verification. And that includes comprehensive curriculum maps. And next bullet, those comprehensive curriculum maps are to be aligned with standards. The vast majority of teachers at the high school have state standards and standards that we're aligning their maps to. The ones that don't have standards, all of those have national standards, databases to draw from, to build lesson plans. From those, those lesson plans will be, will be put together to create comprehensive curriculum maps with goals. We've done a very good job with that. We feel like, if you think about vertical alignment, and that's what we're working towards vertically aligning math throughout the entire school, we've done a pretty good job of horizontally aligning curriculum at the high school. The 9th grade science teachers are getting on the same page, for the most part, they are on the same page. To the point where we are in the implementation stages of common assess, assessments within these courses. That's, if you think about the cycle and all the different steps that we're taking, we feel very much implemented in the first two dashes. The third one, close to, some departments probably completely there, but certainly a goal of everyone. And what we were beginning to get into were, oh yeah, there's the horizontal alignment. The increased use of formative assessments, that was, that's kind of the next stage of what we're going to do. It's much easier to build formative assessments collaboratively with groups if everybody's teaching the same thing. If you have the same standards, if you have the same assessments, assessments being common assessments with courses. So the next step on this was going to be the increased use of formative assessments to help students. Okay, the other bullet within our current plan is increase of graduation rates. It's been a focus of ours for, probably forever, but it's been an intentional focus for three years. And within that, course completion rate strategies, and we have, every department has strategies that have been implemented and improved by administration. And I have a whole list of them, I didn't put them on that list, but increasing parent involvement, all sorts of different strategies to improve attendance. We had a focus in a couple of the departments to focus on vocabulary. All areas chose reading as one of their three strategies that they needed to implement. And most of those were focused on comprehension and comprehension through the increased use of nonfiction within every class. Assuming that then would help with the reading test. Okay, so this is what we've been going through in the last three years. Now, all of this is good stuff, all of this is going to be, this is going to be the baseline that we use as we work to improve this and we work to get this to be much more data-driven and individualized for students. I think we were pretty good at this, but I think the, the cycle that we're beginning on now is going to really take this to the next level. Okay, so when we talk about school improvement, this is the chart that we've used and I think it still works for the purposes here. One of the problems with where we are right now is, we have so many different initiatives going on at once. We have the school improvement, the curriculum verification, the graduation strategies, and we have a lot of different people working in different areas within this. And then if Cathy jumped to the next one, we also have, as everybody knows, well not school safety, click one more. We have the iPad initiative. And even, now I'm gonna sound, again, necessarily complicated. With the iPad initiative, jump back to the last screen, if you can jump back, okay. I really feel like when it comes to the technology implementation of our iPad initiative, I feel like it's fully realized. Through the tech department, the leadership that we've had with not only our teachers, our tech empowered teachers, but the tech department led by Jason, I really feel like we're already to the monitor and evaluate stage when it comes to the functionality of the iPads. We, it was a really short curve, we had, we had very knowledgeable people that got us there in a hurry. The place within the iPad initiative where we still are in the implementation plan and, and we're working constantly in teacher groups, that's how can these iPads affect curriculum? How can these iPads increase engagement? We are not yet to the monitor and evaluate, we're still, you know, six months in, seven months in. We're still pretty much in the implementation plan of that. So all these disparate things, we're really hoping to kind of get it more concise as we build one comprehensive school improvement plan. Okay, so school safety, I'll talk more about that, but school safety is a continuing initiative. We're already, we are, in fact, I just had a meeting today, we're back to analyzing needs. About five years ago, I led an initiative as an assistant principal to, to reevaluate school safety and school climate and what we do and how we do it. The teachers have completely bought in, Officer Snyder, the assistant principals now, lead an initiative where we intentionally look at how we run our school from 6:00 in the morning until, until 5:00 at night. And I'll get into that just a little bit later, but, but know that that's something that, that we pay a lot of attention to. Okay, the timeline, make sure that I, oh, last note on everything we've done before. We want to make sure that we continue to maximize the gains of what we've done and we've already implemented as we add in the powerful implementation of data-driven math and reading strategies. So the, the improvement timeline, I'm just gonna have you zip through all of these. This is probably a process you're fairly familiar with. We are obviously behind where the other schools are. We're at, we're at the stage right now, the potential strategy stage, where if you picture a group of teachers standing in a room with whiteboards, writing all sorts of strategies down, we feel pretty, we've gone through the data, we've done as much as we possibly can with what we have to work with. We've drawn some hypotheses for the reasons for the data, which I'll get into today. We went through the root cause analysis with Cheryl, that was very interesting. And it's the fishbone exercise where why is it the way that it is? Well, let's pull out the non-controllables and let's focus on the controllables. And it's easy to say and it's difficult to do. And we worked through that whole process with our team, it was probably about a month ago, five weeks ago, where we got that far. And now with our leadership team, we are right into the potential strategies and it's the most exciting stage for me. It's the brainstorming stage, which is what I like and our team is into. And we'll start rolling out some of those strategies a little bit later. Okay, reading. The data that the high school works with is a little bit, it's, it's a little more limited than the data set that the elementary's and the middle school can work with. Because when we look at these numbers, we're looking at different sets of students every year. We only give the reading tests for students who pass it one time. And so the 10th grade senior, the 2010 senior high, 2011 senior high, and 2012 senior high, those are all different students. So it's really difficult to see trends with different sets of students unless you can really look at a longitudinal study. Three years is what we have to work with and we're gonna make the best of it. We'd like to be able to see these kids over time, but they haven't taken a reading test. You know, the 2010 kids since 8th grade. The other problem we have at the high school is the high school 10th graders often look a lot different than the 8th graders. We have lots of kids that move in to the high school. You know, we'll typically have 40 or 50 more kids in 9th grade than we have in 8th grade. And, you know, with, so it's difficult to watch and to track with authenticity with kids with a two-year gap. So what we were able to concentrate on this time is, is just these kids. I'm going to have Cathy jump to the next graph and I'm gonna explain this one. This is a little different way to look at it. This information that you see is the negative of the chart before. So if you look at the zero, the zero is the state average. If you see, you know, free and reduced lunch 2012, free and reduced lunch 2012, with, at the state averages, we are at about a negative 5.9, so about a negative 6. Okay, so here's where, if, if there's only one thing that you remember from everything that I talk about today, I want to explain from my perspective what I see when I see this. Because when I first looked at this, you know, Cathy, Cathy and Tom sat down and crunched through the data, they rolled this out to me, and this is how the MMR scores are built. This is the graph, this is why we're a 7% school in the MMR scores. And wow, at first it's, you know, we look, we look kind of bad right here. But as you dig into the data and you dig into some of the more, some of the more specifics within our subgroups, it's a little more complicated than that. And that's, I just want to spend a few minutes on this particular chart. The rest of them, we won't, we won't spend a lot of time, a lot of time with. Okay, I'm going to hold, in fact, I'm gonna just stand up here, I'm gonna be more comfortable. Haven't been a while since I could teach. I'm gonna hold off on the all category. First I want to talk about, this is the white subgroup. Okay, the white subgroup, for the most part, we're average. This is comparing Wilmer Senior High School students, 10th grade white students, with other white students across the state. If you look at our Hispanic subgroup, there's a, there's one year where there was a variation of negative 6, but the very following year we were positive, .6. So, we're not going to take credit for this trend. We're not gonna take this six-point gain and say we're going in the right direction. We're going to, there's gonna be a standard deviation that we haven't done, but I'm sure that standard deviation is probably about 6. And if you look at our Hispanic subgroup compared to other Hispanic kids across the state of Minnesota, the reality is, we're pretty average. And as our group looked at this, that was difficult to see, we like to think of ourselves as above average. And we know that this is going to necessarily be a place that we're going to need to concentrate on. Okay, if we move to the next group, you'll notice in our black category, there's only one bar. The reason why we don't have bars, and we intentionally left those bars off for 2010 and 2012, in order to be counted in the MMR scoring, you need a certain number of students in the subgroup to count. So, we did not have enough black students that took the test in 2010 or took the test in 2012 to count as a subgroup. Those students still count in the all. Cathy's the number 20 or 40 for this purpose?
20 for that.
20 for this purpose, I think we had 18 and 16 or something, we were really close. But in 2011, we had enough and so we're able to, the state will measure that, so we put that up here for you. And I will tell you, even though it's a smaller sample size, that number is to this term more significant. Now, when you look at our ELL, the ELL numbers are nearly parallel when you add the, all of the bars in. Again, there's only two instead of three because we didn't have enough, a large enough group in ELL that took this test. And again, you'll see these numbers are significantly below the state average. This is where you're looking at and you're seeing the uniqueness of Wilmer Public Schools. The vast majority of our black students are EL students. The vast majority of our EL students are Somali newcomers. We've made a shift in the last six years where we have students that do not have a history of education. EL used to be that when you, when you brought a student to senior high school, when you brought a student who's in 9th grade and they don't speak English, you need to teach that student English to unlock all of the previous learning. And so we would see, we could see an EL student move into algebra or geometry as soon as they learned enough workable English to do that. What we all know at the high school, what our EL population is, we're unlocking the language to learning that's not there and we're redeveloping math and science classes at a level that's much, much lower than proficiency. The reason why I want to pause on this is, Cheryl just shared with me another chart and it's the access testing. That is our EL students relative to other state, relative to other EL students in the state at their same level. So if you think of this bar right here, this is the proficiency bar, this is all the state cares about in all this measure. They don't measure our students that are this high. If you're this high or this high, you count as proficient. They don't care if you're this high or if you're this high. If you're not there, you don't count as proficient. What we're learning in our EL, in our EL findings, and I can share that in my next board report, we are 20% better than the state average in growing our EL students from here to here. We're not going to get them to proficient if they're not proficient. We're gonna recognize that that's going to be very difficult for a lot of our students. But we feel great about the job that we're doing with those students, even though on paper it looks like we're failing. It looks like we're failing, but we're not. I'll, I will tell our ELL, our EL teachers anytime, and I'll compare our ELL teachers and the growth of their students with similar students at the same time, and I've always known it, Cheryl showed me the document that proves it. It's only a one-year, it's only a one-year document, so I'm gonna kind of wait to roll out. She said, "You need to get this in the paper, you need to call Linda, you need to break about this." And I love the enthusiasm, but a one-year sample size, I want to wait to see a trend. And that will be part of this when we do this. Okay, I'm gonna have you go back, one, I just want to go back. One more thing. Forward. And we'll zip through the other stuff. Okay, free and reduced lunch, again, well below the state average. This same subset, this same subgroup of students is disproportionately represented in here. It's the same kids for the most part. I want to pause though just a second on special ed. We are significantly below the state average in special education. And why? That's a big question, why would that be? We have, we really have a great special ed department, K-12, I've always felt good about it. I, I really think that we do a good job with teaching and I can, I can draw two conclusions. And this will be, this will have to be borne on over time. The first conclusion I would draw is we need to do a better job of aligning IEP goals with proficiency standards proficient to the state. Whether we do that or not, I don't know. You know, maybe within our special ed department, that's what we need to do. I think there's probably something a little more complicated as a potential reason for this. The state allows for a certain percentage of special ed exemptions from even, from kids even taking this test. Depending upon your IEP, you don't have to take the test. If you don't take the test, you don't show up in these test scores. We have not taken that as a school philosophy. What we've done with this test in our special ed students, we've allowed the special ed students, allowed. I mean, the IEP teams determine with the families and the kids, if they want to try the test, would you like to try the test? We make it student, student-based decisions. And if they say yes, we let them try the test. That test score then becomes their goal in the future, part of their IEP and part of their learning. So we don't maximize the exemptions to make our scores look good. We've made student-centered decisions and let the IEP teams determine if they'd like to take the test or not and use that as part of their education and learning.
And those scores are showing up in here?
They're showing up, they took the test.
So why, why would you, why would you not then have a fourth bar showing with those exemptions? So we know what that, so we can rationalize your.
If we exempted the maximum time.
Excuse.
Because we don't know, that's something that we're just working on.
Yeah. Yeah, that's something that we'll need to work on. And, and then within, within IEP's, students can be exempted from passing the test, they're able to individually set those scores and that's something we haven't tracked yet. So that's something that can delineate. That out further. And, you know, part of my answer to that might be, we would have to make a decision as a school in a district to decide if we want to continue to let those kids try that test if they want to? Or should we ask them not to take that test to make our numbers look better?
Well, I'm not, I'm not pushing that, I'm just saying, let's see how we really do compare to the districts that do leave those kids out to validate those numbers or to say, well, that rationale isn't, we still are bad.
Let me go back one step and reemphasize something that I, that I said a little earlier, because I 100% agree with you. This is something that I need to look into to make sure that it's factually correct.
Correct, and that's, I guess that's what I'm saying.
Okay, good.
Come on, okay.
Alright, so, all that being said, this special ed group then also can affect all of these categories because our special ed kids are in every one of these categories. And so they affect all of them. And when you think of our MMR score, there are some kids that could be in, you know, four of these different categories. And so I don't have a problem with our numbers looking like this, as long as the board and Jerry and Cheryl and everybody has a full understanding about, the snapshot doesn't tell the whole picture. If we put this in the front page of the paper, it's like, wow, what's wrong with that school? It's, it's more complicated than that. There's a lot more to the numbers once you take. So, the reality is, even if we improve this and systematically look at this, even if we move our white and Hispanic populations to where our goals are and should be, to be above state average, the all in Wilmer Public Schools is always going to be a challenge because of the population of students we have. And I'm fine with that. I'm fine with the learning and the teaching that we're doing because we teach our kids where they're at and, and we're always going to do that. And I think we do a great job with approval. But the magic bar of proficiency is going to be a challenge for 10% of our students. That's just going to be a reality for this next several years.
How close are we then? I agree with what you're saying, I like the philosophy.
Yeah.
But we need to have a measuring stick for all of our students. But how long can we do that? You know, obviously the evaluation of our schools, it's out of our hands, it goes into the state. How close are we, or how long do you see that we can continue this process before all of a sudden our high school becomes a school on the list?
Last week, we had four new students enroll in Wilmer Senior High School. Two of them have never been in school before. One of them had two years of education and I honestly don't recall the profile of the fourth. And so as long as that population continues to move into our school, our black, our ELL, and one of those students was Hispanic, and our all will always be points where there'll be a challenge. And the question is, when is the state going to recognize the diversity and the challenges that, that some outstate schools have and some inner-city schools have with their population of students? I asked pretty much that very question to the commissioner and the question was, it was at the school assembly, you know, the MMR program, if you rank us, if we improve, if everybody else improves along the same, you know, why make the, why make them, why make them comparable? Why not give us measurable growth goals to determine if we're having success? And her response was great. Her response was, you need to know, we didn't set MMR up to be competitive. Of course, people can use that, if that's how people choose to see it, that's their choice. We set MMR up for these exact same reasons and we're necessarily then dragged to a lower quartile to target resources where we need to. And the example she gave was the $500,000 grant that we gave your elementary school based upon some of these same targets. And so they really are claiming they have the best of intentions with the MMR measure to target the funds to where they're needed the most. And I believed her, I mean, she was, if other people say, well, we're a 7% school, well, our ACT scores last year were above the state average and the state of Minnesota was the highest ranking ACT state in the nation. So I will challenge, you know, give me a set of data and I'll prove you're wrong. So as long as the state continues to not be punitive, but be supportive for students, for schools, that they weigh this way, it's just up to us to, to explain to, to our stakeholders the realities behind the numbers.
I like that. One of the questions I had when I was reviewing this was, do we look at our black population that have been in our district at least five years?
That's a good question. And it is something that we haven't done, but.
I'd like, I'd like to see a flip that if we've had students in our district, because I hear that, if they're in our district for a certain X number of years, their performance is different. And I think we owe that to our Latina families and our black families to be able to say, if your child is in our district, this is what we do. Because we understand the newcomer, but.
I think with our black population, I can think of a few kids at the high school, they would, they would fare very, very well. It's, it's probably a small enough sample size or it wouldn't be too significant. But I think for our Hispanic population, it would be a very good idea. It would be really interesting to see a whole nother set of bar graphs with our Hispanic population with students who have been here since 1st grade or 3rd grade or picky here.
Right, or even they came in 4th grade, you know, they had a couple of years of primary, they went through our middle school and this and that. Because I hear that, but you don't get, like in 5th grade, you get the, it's 3rd grade, the 4th grade, the 5th grade, the 6th grade, you get a lot of data. You as a high school, you don't have data, but I do think you can keep scrambling these numbers and I know you enjoy that, Paul. and I know you enjoy that, Paul.
Yeah, well, Kathy is.
But I would really like to see, being able to say, if you're in our district and you fit into this subcategory, this is what we do for you.
Kathy, get on that, that's a good idea. And she will.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's see here. All right, I can talk more about that, so we'll, we'll move fairly quickly. Reading proficiency findings, the gap between Wilmer Senior High School white students and the gap between the white students to Wilmer Senior High School in the state is small. Gap between the Hispanics and the Wilmer Senior High School in the state is small. Whether it's positive or negative, it's, it's virtually statistically insignificant when you look at students, different students year to year. The largest gap at the state is with the black and ELL groups. There's probably a great deal of overlap between these two groups. Okay?